Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our virtual Town Hall meeting. We are fortunate to be joined by elected officials representing the city of Fremont and the Alameda County Public Health Department for an update on COVID-19 response and relief efforts. We are joined by our mayor, Mayor Lily May, Congressman Ro Khanna, and Anika Chowdhury from the Alameda County Healthcare Services Agency. For those of you who are logged in via Zoom or Facebook Live, welcome. We're happy to have you. There was an agenda posted, and we have made some slight adjustments to the agenda to allow for a brief change in schedule for the congressman. So as we get started, when we get started, we will first hear from Congressman Khanna. Following his update, we will allow a brief question and answer period, and then we will move to the other speakers. So Congressman Ro Khanna will be followed by a question and answer period, and then we will hear from Mayor Lily May. In order to participate in the question and answer period, members of the public who would like to speak may do so when the question and answer period is identified. If you're logging in from Zoom, you will click on the raise hand icon, or if you're calling in, you will dial *9. And I will be sure, one of the moderators will be sure to make an announcement before each section, before each question and answer section of the agenda. We kindly ask that members of the public mute or turn down the broadcast when it's your opportunity to speak, as it may cause interference with the speaker system. I think we're good. We are ready to begin. So on behalf of the city of Fremont, let's like to welcome Congressman Ro Khanna. Congressman Khanna, thank you for joining us today. We will begin with you.
We're making so sorry. A couple of minutes to join. I'm so sorry. So if we could move on with the agenda, then I'll let you know as soon as he joins. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, thank you for the update. Well, as we make some adjustments to allow for Congressman Khanna to join us, Mayor May,
Sure.
Would you like to give some brief opening comments and a welcome to our guest today?
Certainly. So thank you so much for joining us today on our virtual Town Hall. I'm delighted to have this opportunity, also in the timing, that this is also Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to recognize accomplishments and the contribution of the community. Not only is our population in the city of Fremont over 55% Asian, but many of our companies, and actually their US divisions here, based here for Asian companies. And so we are fortunate also to be a city when it comes to education, that we have many opportunities for students and community members to learn about different cultures and heritages. We have the largest Afghan population outside of Afghanistan, and we speak over 105 different languages and dialects here. And I see now that, as I'm talking, that I'm joined now by Congressman Ro Khanna, and so we're delighted to have him here today.
I apologize for being a few minutes late. We had a conference call for the House Caucus that ran a little bit over, but I am so appreciative of Lily May, our mayor's incredible leadership at this time. I think the way she navigated the demands of safety, as well as of small businesses, has really been extraordinary. And I particularly appreciate, Mayor May, your leadership on tolerance and respect. I'm so proud of Fremont and our community for not engaging in the type of hate and xenophobia that we've seen emerge in other parts of the nation. And I know we're joined today by Dr. Erica Pang at the Alameda Health Center, and I are Alameda Public Health official, and I want to thank the Alameda County Health officials for doing fantastic work. Really, the six Bay Area counties sheltering in place at the right time helped prevent innumerable loss of life. So thank you, and thank you for joining us today. I'm looking forward to our conversation.
Thank you, Congressman Khanna. We know that you have a very busy schedule today, and so we actually, we're going to make some adjustments to the schedule to allow for a brief question and answer period after your update. So we can either entertain some questions now or prepare to entertain some questions if there's any additional information you'd like to share.
Let me give a brief update, and then I'm happy to take questions with the mayor and make sure that people's questions get answered. The most important thing that the mayor knows is I've been fighting for getting us more resources. I mean, that's absolutely essential. Our cities have been hard hit, our counties have been hard hit, our state has been hard hit. We passed the HEROES Act, a trillion dollars to state and local governments. And that's critical that we get that funding. It's currently in the Senate. I'm going to continue to push the highest priority to get funding. And as Mayor May knows, I've been pushing also that small cities get that funding. It's not limited to 500,000 people. And it's critical for us to be funding public health. I mean, we have inadequately funded public health in this country. We now see the extraordinary role that people have played in the Alameda County Public Health Department, Santa Clara Department. I'm sure they'll tell you that they have not had the funds. And we need to make sure that we are funding that, funding the testing, funding the capacity going forward, because that has been one of the big weaknesses of our country. So I've been working on increasing science funding. I've had an op-ed out with Senator Schumer on that, increasing public health funding, and getting funding back for the city, states, and localities.
Thank you. Now, if there is anyone who would like to ask the congressman a question, you may do so by clicking on the raise hand icon if you're joining us from Zoom, or if you're calling in by dialing *9. We'll allow a brief moment for people to find the raise hand option.
While we are waiting, I just wanted to also express my appreciation to the Congress member Ro Khanna for his partnership. We realize how important it is, especially in Alameda County. When we look at our county's population, none of our cities actually are greater than 500,000, and yet we are all responding to the COVID impact in our own ways. And so therefore, having those resources available to us is essential for us to be able to be able to provide the programs that we really need for our community. We have been very thoughtful in this, and I look forward to sharing with some of the community members later about how we have been applying the CARES Act funding and the Community Block Development Grants that have come available to us and really pivoting to the needs of our community. Are there any questions at this time, Ayesha? And also, I just want to also clarify real quickly that today for the Alameda County Public Health Department, we're pleased to have Anika Chowdhury join us.
Thank you, Anika Chowdhury, for your work.
Thank you, Mayor May. At this time, we do not have any questions. So Congressman Khanna, if you have any information you'd like to share,
Sure.
kind of moving forward or looking ahead.
I'd be curious to the mayor's.
I'm sorry for interrupting. We have one question from Steven, Steven Two. So, Steven, are you?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, thank you, Steven. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Hello, Congressman. This is Steven Two. Hi, yes, this is Steven Two. I'm with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I just want to thank you for your continued partnership with our organization in helping to serve the Bay Area and the residents in the community, especially during this time. And I just want to ask if there were any updates, if you had heard about any future stimulus components that might help to help buoy our transit services, our transit organizations and agencies at this time. As you might know, a lot of the agencies are seeing severe decreases in ridership, 90% and up decreases in ridership. And this is having a severe impact on their future budget cycles. So.
Yeah, I know. It's a great point. Yeah. I mean, part of the idea was some of the state money to state, cities, and counties could be used for that, but I believe we need to have a separate funding for transit, which could be included in an infrastructure bill. I mean, when you look at frankly what China is doing in terms of the response to COVID, they're using them response to build their infrastructure, to build their public transportation. Why we're not doing the same thing at a time where we have low interest rates, low inflation is a missed opportunity. And I've heard from many of our transit leaders, it's very tough. I mean, people are afraid. They don't want to go on public transit. It's killing our ridership. It's hurting the revenues, and I think this is where the federal government needs to step up. So Steven, thank you for raising that, and I will prioritize that funding in our next push. I'd be curious to ask the Alameda Health officials and Mayor May, your perspective on how the cases have been trending and the hospitalization in Alameda County? How optimistic are you in terms of being able to open for businesses? And how fearful are you of a second wave? But just love to get the perspective of our health officials and our mayor.
Well, I'll be talking about that a little bit later, and I know that Anika will be giving some updates. But I definitely echo your sentiments, and I will be sharing a little bit more about transportation too, because I think it is true that during this time period where there's less traffic or other interference, for example, here at City Hall, our navigation center is actually running a slightly, just a slightly bit ahead of schedule because of the fact that there is less to navigate while you're under the construction period. So there are some good opportunities. As far as the testing data, I will leave it to the county public health to share, but I know that we monitor it on a daily basis and that we are always concerned. And that's why it's important for us to be able to have the visibility at the dashboard level and be able to drill down to see some of the specificities, whether it's on age, gender, the zip codes and cities where this is more occurring. And then also, just, and I mentioned earlier, it's Asian Pacific Heritage Month, be able to get the communications and information out in multiple languages. So those are also important access points. And including here in Fremont, we have the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind, so having sign language sometimes or closed caption available.
Thank you, Mayor May. So Congressman, just to talk a little bit about the numbers, we're at 2,609 cases countywide. That includes cases in the city of Berkeley, which is about 70. And so far, we've had 90 deaths, including one in the city of Berkeley. So Berkeley has its own health jurisdiction. They're one of three cities in the state that have that. And so, but we work really closely with them.
And then does that include Oakland or?
So we have 14 cities in Alameda County, only Berkeley is the only one with its own health department. And so.
It does include Oakland?
Yes, it includes Oakland. And so everybody is, yes, sorry. So it does include Oakland. And we have a dashboard that shows, you know, cases by city, cases by age, by gender. We've also done a bit of race and equity analysis, and we're seeing, you know, higher disproportionate impacts among our African-American, Latinx, and Pacific Islander communities. And so we've got an equity initiative based on where we want to increase testing in underserved areas, where we want to make sure people have, you know, the supports they need around them to be able to isolate and quarantine. So this is especially important for people who might be living in overcrowded conditions. We're working with the state to have open up hotels. We've leased four or five hotels so far. And then I think you had asked about the business aspect of it. So we did just modify our shelter in place order earlier this week to move into stage two of the state. So now we've allowed curbside retail and storefront pickups and manufacturing. So it's a small step forward. We're still behind where the state is as a whole. And that'll be, you know, because we started off with such a high burden of disease in the Bay Area. And so we've got indicators that we're monitoring that include, you know, whether we have sufficient hospital capacity, whether we have sufficient personal protective equipment for all of our healthcare workers, whether we're able to do all the disease containment activities that we need to do. And on that note, I really want to appreciate you highlighting the fact that our, you know, basic public health infrastructure has kind of been underfunded for a very long time. And so to scale up to something this big, it's been quite a challenge, and you know, we're working on that because this is very much bread and butter, like, public health activities that, for example, in our regular daily lives, we monitor over 80 infectious diseases with a team of seven people doing the case and contact tracing for that. And now we're looking to increase that team to 300, just so we can keep up with the COVID cases.
And certainly, in Fremont, we had, I'll be talking about it later, but about the fact that testing was one of the things that we stepped up to first, besides the city of Hayward. And we actually put in 500,000 for the test kits, as well as staffing and the labor for it. And one of our challenges now is that we have since, while offering the free COVID-19 testing with walk-up appointments in partnership with Tri-City Health Center and with Washington Hospital, and most importantly, our Fremont Fire Testing Center, and the resource being available there, it is now transitioned to a mobile testing. But that is scheduled to run through May 31st. And we are looking forward to possible additional support. And while we may get some support on testing, the test kits itself, the labor piece of it is significant in hindrance to us to be able to continue. And so there is testing that's available in the city because we are fortunate to have so many healthcare partners with Washington Hospital, Tri-City Health, and Kaiser, but they test mostly their own patients. Only Tri-City Health has been able to test the broader audience. And there are certainly commercial ones that are available for people who can pay. But we feel that this is so important and critical at this moment to really consider not just those who can pay, but to have that accessibility. And this is not about the Alameda County Public Health Department. I can understand the reasons why when you're looking at the data, but it is a concern that so far for us that many of the resources have been focused on North County and have been in Oakland, both the four testing centers up there and also the hotels. And I know that there's been efforts to migrate some of those to other parts of the county, but it certainly is a great concern to us. And so anything that you could do for us in terms of helping us with funding or leveraging those efforts to ensure that there is the focus. When you look at the, one of the maps, so the data dashboard, you can see it's actually by zip code. And Fremont has the fourth highest count at 144 people and at a rate of 61.3. I look at that every single day. But considering the size that we're almost at, a quarter of a million people, we actually so far have been able to maintain the fifth lowest case rates, and we hope to continue to do so. But a cornerstone, so their question that you were asking about with businesses reopening, with the Memorial Day weekend setting in, and people just feeling more comfortable and a little too comfortable, in my opinion, when I see social distancing and lack of face coverings, that we are going to then see possibly some increase in the cases, which is what we're seeing right now, because people have really wanted to get out of shelter in place and are relaxing a little too much.
You have seen increases?
We have seen. Ours has been slight, in terms of almost every day, we increase by one to two, sometimes a little bit more, and sometimes we even see it go reverse when they reclassify or reassign the people to different city or different zip code. But at the same time, it's something that, the cornerstone is that testing that I've heard about from the federal level, from the state level, the governor, that we need to.
And Madam Mayor, can anyone now in Fremont get a test, or where does that stand?
No, you can get a test at your provider. You can, I mean, you can get a test, but you'd have to maybe pay because we have the mobile testing clinic that is able to roll around to those who are symptomatic. And we've been focusing on, when we're traveling for the mobile clinic, to reach some of those who we couldn't reach earlier, maybe as easily, such as near nursing facilities and other areas, which we've seen hotspots in other cities. But to have the broader base, so it's available for free to everyone who's not symptomatic, that you see, like, for example, in Contra Costa County right now, that has not been able to be rolled out yet at this time. And then I think there's probably going to be questions from others later on about antibody testing, and but that's still also variable in terms of the science and accuracy too.
Mayor May, speaking of questions, I'm going to hop in here real quick. We do have a couple of questions from the audience. And Congressman Khanna, I know that you have a limited amount of time. So we do have a question from Benny Lee that says, "COVID-19 Shelter in Place Order Has Increased the Need for Our Kids to Distance Learn and for Nonessential Workers to Telework." However, the Shelter in Place Order has further revealed the digital divide gap, particularly for underserved and vulnerable populations. Do we have legislation that directs and/or increases funding in covering these underserved, unserved populations from a connectivity and device perspective?
There, this is a brilliant question that we do. I mean, look, we're hearing of people who have to go drive miles to get basic broadband or in parking lots to do homework. There is a digital divide that has been exposed in this crisis. And Clyburn is leading, the majority leader Clyburn is leading the effort to have high-speed, affordable internet finally for everyone in this country. That's essential, and to have devices that we provide people with laptops or computers that are, if they don't have these devices. So there's an effort taking place right now. I'm on the task force to help overcome that digital divide, and I appreciate your raising that. Very good point.
Thank you, Congressman. Do you have time for one more question?
Of course. Yeah, I have some time.
Okay, so we have Diane Shaw that's called in and has a question. Diane?
Yes, hello, I'm there.
Hi, thank you for joining.
How are you?
I'm doing good. How are you? The previous question kind of addresses a little bit about this, but what I was going to say was I too have some concern as we move forward with equity in our county. And it's not just about the distance learning or the infrastructure, but also about transportation for getting kids to school. So as we move forward with, you know, some of the social distancing guidelines, if we can only carry 20% of students to school that we previously carried, you know, I'm concerned that there are going to be those students in low-income areas that are not, they're just not going to go to school going forward. And so I think it's really important that we look at the whole picture when we start looking at equity and how we ensure that these people that need it get the help they need.
Yes, I think this has totally exposed some of the equity challenges. One, there are 60 million Americans in this country still working physically, doing jobs. People, the essential workers are bringing their groceries, who are picking up our trash, or making sure the Zoom call works because the electricity is working. Well, we need to pay them fairly and protect them. So many of us are online. We have the privilege of being online. And then second, we have to deal with the equity in terms of school districts. I mean, school budgets aren't not to be cut right now. If anything, schools need more funding to deal with remote learning and distance learning and provide technology that's going to be necessary. And we need to make sure we're looking at the equity issues of that. So that is on the forefront of my mind, and I'll be working with you and Madam Mayor and others on those issues.
Thank you. We have a question from Diane Jones. Diane, it looks like we may need to make an adjustment due to a technical issue. If you're able to submit the question via chat, that would assist us in sharing the question with the panel. Thank you for answering the chat, Diane Jones. It'll just be one moment as our next participant submits a question via chat. We'd like to thank everyone for their patience as we navigate through using Zoom. We're excited. This is the first Town Hall that we are hosting with multiple panelists using both the Zoom platform and Facebook Live. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we make some adjustments. Okay, for the panelists, this question is from Diane Jones. It states, "I was looking at the county data on the website. It looks to me like the most recent 10 days have more new cases than the prior 10-day period. Why did the county relax the shelter in place order earlier this week?"
Yeah, thanks for that question, Diane. So a couple of things to note. So as we look at data, you know, I was mentioning earlier, we're looking at various indicators. One of them is the new numbers of cases and new numbers of hospitalizations. We want to see those to be flat or decreasing. And when we relaxed the order, what we're seeing right now is impacts of our last relaxation. So the last time we relaxed the order, it was on April 29th, and it went into effect on May 4th. And it takes a couple of weeks for us, because the incubation period for the virus is two to 14 days. It takes a couple of weeks to see any impacts. So we're monitoring this very closely. And the other thing is, is that, you know, we, as a county, and Mayor May alluded to this earlier, testing is, we, as, we're one of the, we're actually the only county in the Bay Area that does not operate its own public health system. So Alameda Health System is our public health system, but it's not a part of the county. And so we have worked with a lot of partners in a lot of our cities, like Fremont, have been first out the gate to help set up testing sites. And so our testing network has lagged a little bit behind because it's been built in partnership with cities and philanthropy and others. And so as we see testing capacity increase, which is where we are now, so our goal is to get to 3,100 tests per day. Right now, we're at about 1,000. And so as that testing capacity has increased, we're also just seeing more people test positive. So it's not necessarily that, you know, because we relaxed the order, all of a sudden, we have a lot more cases, although that's certainly the danger, and that's why we want to move incrementally. It's a little bit of a combination of, you know, more movement in the community. The virus is really contagious. It's very widespread, and we've had a recent increase in testing.
Thank you. There was actually a second part of that question. I apologize. I wasn't able to see the second part. So it's, it states, "As a school board trustee, we just approved drive-through graduations in light of the new order, but what will happen if we see, what will happen if we see a spike in cases due to relaxed restrictions?" So before you answer that, I am just going to let everyone know we're at about the halfway mark of the Town Hall meeting. And we have updates to hear from Mayor May as well as Ms. Chowdhury. So we will, this will be the last question that we ask during this question and answer period of time, and then we will move to Mayor May to hear her update. And then we will come back to the other questions at the conclusion of the updates from both speakers. Okay, you're good to go now for the second half of this question.
Or can you, sorry, Ayesha, could you remind me?
Yes, sure. Yes, sure. The second half of the question stated, as a school board trustee, we just approved drive through graduations. In light of the new order, what will happen if we see a spike in cases due to relaxed restrictions?
Yeah, I think so. This is one of the difficult things about messaging about the shelter in place order. You know, we've kind of said from the very beginning that, you know, it's, it's an incremental way out of it. And so part of the reason we want to move slowly is because moving too quickly has really dire health consequences. Moving slowly also means that if we need to go back a step, we can do that again, right? So the, the shelter in place order that we have right now is in place until it's amended or rescinded. And so if we saw something that was very alarming in the number of cases or any sort of trends related to COVID-19, we would then, you know, move back toward more restrictive measures.
Thank you very much. We are now going to prepare to move into the update from Mayor May. But prior to the update from Mayor May, Congressman Connor, we would just like to say thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I want to just thank the Alameda County Public Health entire team for the extraordinary work you've been doing and our mayor, Mayor May. Thank you for your tireless efforts. I believe that the Bay Area has been one of the best responses to coronavirus in the nation. In fact, I read somewhere from the former CDC head that said that if the New York had taken the approach the Bay Area did in terms of early sheltering in place, early emergency centers as the mayor, our mayor did in Fremont, early restrictions on groups meeting, that they could have had 80%, 80% fewer deaths in, in New York City. That's not me, that's the former CDC head. So I think we shouldn't be rested on our laurels, but I've talked to everyone I can about how the Bay Area, particularly Alameda County, Santa Clara County are models for the country. And I will continue, and our office will continue to be of any help we can to constituents and fighting for as much resource, as many resources as we can get.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor May?
So thank you Congressman Connor for joining us today and we're delighted to be able to give an update. And so I'm going to share a little bit about some of the things that have been occurring in our city. And I talked earlier about testing and part of this came from the fact that in January, we started hearing about the concerns. And so we started partnership with the county in terms of creating fact sheets and information out from the Fremont Fire Department in partnership with the county's public health department to create more awareness. But as the testing period is now winding down, we're moving to mobile testing. We still also want to consider all the resources that are available and please look at our website for those communications. That is something that has become a cornerstone for us in terms of remaining accessible to the community. As progress and this information is very fluid, we're working across all our departments and agencies to improve, expand and assess how we can effectively communicate to support our community with maintaining regular communications. We launched a dedicated webpage, www.fremont.gov/coronavirus and we have a hotline at 510-284-4093 to house updated resources and information on COVID-19. And general updates are also often available from our city's social media accounts on Facebook, Nextdoor, Nixal and Twitter. We have city updates and press releases that are being published on our website, on social media and on our local Tri-City Voice Weekly Newspaper. Information updates are also available for those who do not have internet access by 211 to provide assistance, information. Because we realized that, as we were talking earlier, not everyone has as easy access to, to the internet and a computer. A virtual joint information system was also initiated across, to work across all of our city's departments and special districts and school districts in the tri-city area to allow for weekly check-ins and information gathering and dissemination and operational support. This specific network is inevitably enhances our ability to connect with the other groups, to identify the fact that we have different audiences, but we also share each other, with each other on COVID-19 related services updates. As I mentioned earlier, it's important for us to have language accessibility. So we've translated some of these into Spanish, Vietnamese, Tagalog, Hindi, Dari and Chinese. And several of our mailings have gone out from our human services clients and updating them on services, especially things like telemedicine. The other area I want to mention is support for our vulnerable populations. Fremont's looking out for our unhoused residents as well. And using county funding, we helped set up several hygiene infrastructure at key locations throughout the city, including the Fremont Main Library. There are seven of these temporary sanitation stations and they include hand washing and toilet units that have been installed throughout the city. And as I mentioned and alluded to earlier, we've been continuing our work for the construction of the Temporary Navigation Center, which is designed to provide a clean, safe, calm environment to allow residents to find stable, permanent housing. We're on track to begin operations in the beginning of the summer. The agency is part of a strategic plan to address the growing homelessness crisis. And we will serve 45 homelessness adults for up to six months from our community while they're housing and receiving the navigation services. In addition, the chefs at the Fremont Senior Center have been deployed to the Sunrise Village, which is managed by a boat and are helping to, with the food ordering, food prep and assisting with keeping the shelter's food services running smoothly. The shelter can accommodate up to 66 participants, both single and families with children. And the city also began a partnership with local autonomous vehicle company Pony AI to help deliver meals prepared by the staff at the senior center to residents at the Islander Motel as contact free service. In addition, I know that on the first and third Wednesdays of the, of the week, first week, first and third weeks, Mondays and Wednesdays, we have drive through pickup from, that's supported by Tri-City volunteers over at our senior center. And so if you are looking for some of these resources, please again, look at our website. And we also have, in addition to the Temporary Navigation Center beginning construction this past February, it's part of our strategic plan, I'm sorry. As I mentioned earlier, we also talk about reopening and recovery. And so this is important for us and not just for the homelessness service, but how we work with business and what's the new norm. And that's a big question that many have been discussing. And we're transitioning right now from a pandemic response to a mixed response of response and recovery. And an emphasis will be placed on workplace protocols. And our city is an example of that. Even before the shutdown, we started navigating our, our public space area so that we can have six foot distancing. And so we're in the process of examining how would we respond in the future as we open up. We also are talking about COVID-19 testing. And one essential element is to be able to identify and separate those experiencing COVID-19 from the balance of the workforce. This has allowed us to really rethink what's an essential service. And through thorough and critical analysis of our city services, we're able to prioritize the order by which we've been able to have service restoration and identified services that could be modified or deferred to the extent practical is eliminated. So some of the things include revised personal protective equipment. The city has developed a policy to establish PPE requirements based on risk and exposure levels. We've also centralized our logistics and supply management because we realized competition for scarce resources coupled with the supply chain disruptions we're seeing have necessitated a logistics operations and an analysis of that. And centralized PPE and supply ordering process was developed to improve procurement, to establish realistic burn rates and reduce hoarding and to ensure that PPE is available to support the resumption of our city services. On a personal note, I just wanted to mention how pleased we are to see so many of our community members and faith-based, ethnic-based, service-based rotary groups all step forward to help support us in this time of need. And we couldn't do it without all of you. We also have implemented engineering controls and assessment of public facing reception and work areas are being performed by building and risk management departments. We're looking at the potential for workplace exposure and we've consulted with an industrial hygienist in developing some of the protocols to report an exposure and isolating the area, cleaning and disinfecting of the workplace. In addition, our city's leadership will develop and present local regulations to balance, to ensure a balance between the risks presented by the pandemic and the economic impact that we're seeing by the business closures. And we are, some of those areas is that we are a city of innovation. So we're using virtual technology and have expanded the use of telework and telehealth, which was implemented early on as a bridging strategy. And the city will continue to expand these platforms to achieve the physical distancing and to maintain and increase productivity and provide a better live-work balance. Some of those other options include alternate work schedules, hours of operations, employment bridge strategies, providing physical distance. It may be the requisite in our new norm for this time. And to create physical distance between the coworkers. Some of the following strategies we're considering right now include work reallocation assessment. And this is being initiated by our human resources and it seeks to identify employees whose work has been reduced or eliminated and temporarily assign them to departments or divisions that are experiencing increased work volume and demands. Alternate shift schedules or work hours. And this is the city working in cooperation and partnership with our labor groups and subject to labor agreement, is considering alternate work schedules and expanded work hours to address the unique circumstances right now that we're seeing in the workforce. And also things like job sharing. If the volume of the work is substantially decreased, perhaps job sharing strategies will be encouraged to avoid layoffs so that we can maintain our critical institutional knowledge and our wonderful staff. For economic recovery, Fremont's Economic Recovery Task Force is actively working on strategies as we emerge from the pandemic. This includes the city's large and small business communities, the Chamber of Commerce, our historic business districts and our other government partners. Near-term actions have really been focused on helping our businesses reopen. So creating sector-specific safety guidelines and playbooks, which is something essential for us to see in partnership with the Alameda County Public Health Department. How can we look at what's worked and to be able to replicate and create straw men so people can be able to utilize those processes, provide directories for critical supplies, disseminate information on employment and labor laws, share case studies, which we've had the opportunity with some of the career bites and other things to have, talk about businesses in Fremont who have pivoted their operations. And how can we as a city implement policies that can help facilitate and expedite that process? To create a repository of business assistant programs and continuing looking for more opportunities to develop our own unique programs that address the needs of our community. Some of the things the economic department did right away in terms of assisting our small businesses is creating a business assistant hotline. It's 510-284-4020. And that's on our website. It's being staffed to talk about specific business inquiries related to the COVID-19 pandemic as well as business resources at fremont.gov/covid, C-O-V-I-D-B-I-Z, resources, R-E-S-O-U-R-C-E-S, no space. That has information on financial resources, labor, workforce policies and more. And the Alameda County Workforce Development Board can also help with this with the Rapid Response Program, which is funded by the US Department of Labor under Dislocated Worker Program of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Our outreach is to small businesses continue and we look forward to encouraging our residents when they are looking for alternatives for meals to seek takeout or order takeout from one of our 350 plus local residence restaurants who are open and need support. We've developed an interactive map that you can use from any device to find restaurants and coffee shops that are open and offering takeout, delivery services, as well as other small businesses that have been able to comply with the current shelter in place orders. And these can be found on our map at www.fremont.govopen. Our Small Business Task Force has convened and we're rolling out an open for business campaign, which maybe many of you have seen throughout our city with our orange signs that have been popping up in window fronts. And most excitingly, earlier this week, we just announced our Fremont Small Business Grant Program. And I alluded earlier that we wanted to share these efforts that we believe in supporting our small businesses and will provide up to 400,000 to small business in 5,000 or 10,000 grand, dollar grants, depending on the number of employees on the payroll at the time of the initial shelter in place. And the city of Fremont partnered with the startup Gifty to launch an e-gift card platform called Gift Fremont, which will allow anyone to purchase gift cards for local small businesses and support them. To launch the program, the city of Fremont set initial funding of $5,000, which will offer, could be used to, to offer a bonus on gift card purchases, specifically $5 incentive on gift card purchases valued at $20 and above and a $15 incentive on gift card purchases valued at $40 and above to encourage more customers to support our local businesses. The platform is set up to transfer gift cards to the businesses right away, gift card funds to the businesses right away, giving participating small businesses an immediate boost in revenue. Our Economic Development has also hosted an SBA webinar for tri-city businesses to provide information to over 100 participants regarding the new funding programs, including the Paycheck Protection Program and Economic Injury Disaster Loans. Economic Development and Lonnie College hosted a virtual career fair and some of these sessions called Career Bites that featured more than 300 job opportunities from local manufacturer and biotech powerhouses, Evonix and also Evolve Manufacturing. And we will continue, as I mentioned earlier, to advocate for these resources. Finally, I'm going to wrap up.
Mayor May, thank you. We, that was a lot of great information that we will also have, that is also available on our website.
Sure.
And looking at the time, this has been a great town hall meeting with lots of, lots of helpful updates. We have a limited amount of time to hear from the representative from the Alameda County
Thank you.
Healthcare Services Agency. So I'm going to pause you. I'm sorry that I
No worries.
Cut you off before rolling into your closing comments. But we'd like to allow for some time, for a couple of minutes, for Anika Choudhury to be able to share information on behalf of the Alameda County Public Health Department.
Thanks Aisha, thanks Mayor May, thanks for having me on here and for hosting this forum for people to get their questions answered. I'll keep it super brief. I think that most people are aware, so Shelter in Place has been updated. We are allowing a little bit more activity and, you know, in-person gatherings are still prohibited. And from a messaging perspective, we really want everyone to continue to stay home as much as possible, cover your face when you're out in public and make sure you're staying six feet away from everybody. And wash your hands often. Also wash your children's hands often. And the mayor brought up a lot of good work that the city of Fremont is doing around preparing to reopen and helping businesses do safe reopening plans. And so I just wanted to share that on our website, on the Alameda County Public Health Department site, there is a link to a COVID recovery page. And so what we've done there is our team is available to offer technical assistance to businesses who are looking to plan for reopening, whether they're open right now or not. Because right now, it's only a limited number of business types that can be open. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at various indicators and seeing what the pandemic conditions are. And we do expect the pandemic to be here, you know, for the next 18 to 24 months. And so we're kind of planning for the long term. And so we plan to follow the guidance that's set forth by the state for various industries. And we will supplement that with local best practices and local guidance as that's needed. So I think, you know, as you were saying, Mayor, you're thinking about open space or like how restaurants open, things like that. I think that there's a lot of sharing of information and best practices that our cities could do with each other as well. And so we'd like to put those up there. So that's a resource that I just wanted to share. We're continuing to do our disease containment and outbreak mitigation efforts and collecting data and getting, you know, supporting high-risk group living settings, shelters and long-term care facilities. We're continuing to increase our testing capacity in partnership with various cities around the county. And I do want to note that, you know, we're trying to, because we have an equity lens and there are a lot of communities that were underserved and didn't have any testing in the that were underserved and didn't have any testing in the beginning, we're trying to make sure that we're getting testing out there. And some of the partnerships that we've had with the state are actually interesting because we can move those sites around the county. So just something to know. And then I'll just stop there and we can move on to questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We have a question. So thank you for those participants who have submitted questions via chat. We have a question from, from, from Lisa Agiri, who would like an update on the status of Fremont Recreational Department and schools?
Well, I can't address the schools, unfortunately. That's through the school board and through the school district. I know that they are moving towards online learning, and it sounds like they're doing some drive-through graduation ceremonies. But certainly, it's something that they're working closely, I'm sure, with the Alameda County Public Health Department too, to look at their updated guidelines. And I know that they had put out some guidelines specifically on two areas. One is the drive-through services. Because I think they've heard a lot of people talking about drive-through graduation. And then the other is, they had, Alameda County Office of Education had some guidelines for graduation. As for the future of moving forward, I think that is an ongoing question that we're having. And you heard the Congress member talk about the digital access. And that is a concern for not just Fremont, but throughout the entire city, county, and looking at how we address those needs. And so as we learn more, we'll be happy to share that. But that's part of why we were looking at accessibility for our community members. And there are different companies that have stepped up to provide programs. And we look forward to sharing those with you. As for our parks and recreation, one of the things that is important to note, as we receive the guidelines, we update ours. And so since that has just been recently opened, there's been some direction in terms of tennis and some other areas. But some of the other sports and facilities at this time, they've said that it has to be isolated, for example, in tennis, to just a single family, singles only, no double playing. And then also has to be out in an open tennis court, if I remember correctly. Please correct me if it's wrong. And some of the other areas, they will give us more guidelines. But at this time, they don't have team sports. And they are looking at also, we are looking at how to adjust our summer recreation program. And we provided some of those guidelines, which we'll be happy to share later on on our city's website, because we do want people to have some accessibility to different options in this time.
Mayor May, if I could add just one thing. So in the most recent Shelter in Place order, you can now play tennis with somebody outside of your family. But again, like the mayor said, just singles. So that you can also play pickleball, just singles. And we did also release some guidance for camps and summer recreational activities. But those at this time are only open to people who are allowed to work outside their home. So that's essential workers and frontline workers and healthcare workers.
Thank you. And for those who are considering submitting a question, we do have, we have a few minutes remaining in the town hall meeting, and we appreciate everyone for joining us. There was a question that I inadvertently skipped over earlier from Angus Cochran. The question was for Congressman Kana, but I'm still going to read it, just so. You know, you're aware of the question. It says, "Do you think there might be more assistance provided to hospitals if there is another round of federal funding?" We are so appreciative of all the support the government has provided, but we continue to face massive financial challenges at Washington Hospital. And he says, "Many thanks." And I don't know if anyone would like to briefly answer that, if you have any information with regards to federal funding. If not, we may save that for Congressman Kana for a future meeting. Or Ms. Chowdhury, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Aisha, I just wanted to appreciate the question and note that, you know, the state budget that came out last week was not very comforting. And the Medi-Cal program is already underfunded. And, you know, so we're very concerned about the impact this is going to have, especially on our hospitals that do serve any of our Medi-Cal patients. And as people lose jobs, you know, more people might be reliant on the safety net. And so I think in terms of collective advocacy that we can do to make sure that our healthcare systems are funded, it would be better off, like, we'll all be better off in the end.
Thank you very much. We have a question from S. Reshma E., and forgive me if I'm, because I know I'm mispronouncing this name, I apologize. S. Reshma Inamandar. Can we have a very small backyard gathering, so as long as we can be six feet apart?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So at this time, you should only be having gatherings with people who are from your own family, from your own household that you live with usually. And we understand that that's especially difficult to do. You know, a holiday weekend that's coming up where a lot of people might be celebrating the end of Ramadan. So it'll be Eid festivities, and it's Memorial Day, and it's beautiful weather. But, you know, if we all want to get through this, we need to really, really slow the spread of this virus. And one of the best ways to do that is to avoid crowds of any size.
That was one of the things I was also going to mention. I know I was looking at some of the data earlier today, and that's just a personal observation. We know that this is Memorial Day weekend, that there's a lot of other festivities going on, and people have become a lot more comfortable. And it's great that we crave that contact with human beings and with one another. But what we're seeing right now, because some people have really relaxed, I have seen groups in the parking lots, especially with our youth, who have been closer than three feet and not wearing face coverings. And so what we've seen in the last couple of days, because I've seen that at parks, I've seen that at different food and restaurant places and social gathering opportunities, especially if we're going to do graduations and other things, I'm worried that we're going to see an increase in cases if we don't practice those measures. So I strongly encourage those who are trying to have these openings and gatherings to figure out how can we do it safely and to follow these orders, because it is essential for us if we're going to have to have safe reopenings of our businesses and with our community, we need to address those. And I certainly look forward to the partnership with the county and hopefully be able to navigate some of those testing centers, hopefully in resources towards Fremont, because we are next to some cities that are experiencing a growth, and ourselves included. And that is essential for us to be able to know where to serve the community, to focus our attention in knowing where that testing is critical.
Thank you, Mayor May. So we now are at the 2:00, the 2:00 PM point of the meeting. And we know that some of our participants and those who have joined us will be needing to go back to do other things. There is one thing I'd like to clarify related to the tennis courts. And then we have one final question.
Sure.
So the community park, to clarify, the community park tennis courts are opening on Saturday, this coming Saturday. And the Central Park tennis courts will be closed until July, or until June 5th, my apologies. Central Park tennis courts are closed until June 5th. The final question that we are taking for the meeting is from David S., and it's for both panelists. David would like to know if there are any updates on churches and faith-based gatherings, both indoor and outdoor?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So again, I think, you know, one of the most difficult things to deal with is the no in-person gatherings. And our faith-based community, from the very beginning, has been really wonderful in partnering and helping us get the word out with the congregations to make sure that people are staying home and not doing faith-based gatherings. I did not note that the other, in my update earlier, is that we also issued a, an order this week that allows card gatherings. So Mayor May referenced how that might be used for graduations. I do know that some of the faith-based community are also planning to use that for, you know, religious services, where you might have a bunch of cars in a parking lot outdoors, but everyone stays within their car. And you only have people from your own household in the car. And, you know, there's no lingering outside. So there's a lot of, it's a pretty highly regulated situation. And we feel like we can do that safely at this time, given the conditions. But in terms of in-person gatherings, you know, that still wouldn't be until stage three. And we're right now in early stage two. That said, I will note that our agency is having conversations with a lot of faith-based partners to understand how we can be supportive and get prepared for when you can open. Because even when you open, you're not going to go right back to, you know, really crowded church pews or big collective, like prayer gatherings. And so we're still going to need to do social distancing, and we'll still need to do some modifications to protect against COVID. So we're encouraging everyone to think about what their physical space might look like. But then also, you know, start incorporating virtual gatherings into your business practices. Start thinking about other ways you might be able to commune and have fellowship. And maybe that means having smaller services multiple times a day. You know, just kind of thinking through some of those things.
So for us, we have been sharing about the drive-through card gatherings. We have had also, just to mention, a couple of days ago, we had the National Day of Prayer, and we did it via Zoom webinar. It is not the easiest way, and it's certainly not as personal. But we were able to be able to share still in these times. And I think it's very important, not just for the faith base, but also for the mental health. And I know that Washington Hospital has been partnering with us too, to create things. A discussion on mental health was a couple of days ago. And earlier today, they had what's cooking or cooking guidance of how to eat healthy during the COVID-19 period. And so these types of resources are what we're seeking to work on in these challenging times. And we appreciate the patience, understanding, and support of all of our businesses, of different local agencies. And most importantly, all of you are community members who recognize that we are stronger together when we work on this.
And that is a great note to end on. Thank you, Mayor May, and thank you, Anika and Congressman Kana. On behalf of the city of Fremont, we'd like to thank you for joining us today. Please visit the city's website. As the information that was shared in the websites and content shared today will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel after we have the video closed captioned. But we share daily updates, and you can connect with us there. Thanks again for joining us and enjoy the rest of your day.